Good evening, if you'll please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, thank you for joining us tonight. We've got some special guests in our audience. We're excited to get this meeting started, but first we're going to start off with our land acknowledgement. Who's reading that for us this evening? Director Witherspoon?
Evergreen Public Schools resides on the traditional lands of the Chinaman Peoples and the Kowalski Tribe. They have lived on and cared for this land and its waterways since time immemorial. We thank them for their stewardship and make this acknowledgement to open the space of recognition, inclusion and respect for all Indigenous students, families and staff in our community.
Thank you. All right, next up on our agenda is to adopt this evening's agenda, so we'll entertain a motion for that.
I move adoption of this evening's agenda as presented.
So moved in second in, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great, thank you. All right, we will go ahead and move on to special recognition and we are going to celebrate our district bookmark contest winner and up to the podium is Michelle Annette Cascade, middle school librarian, welcome, thank you for coming this evening.
So normally every year the Fort Vancouver Regional Library runs a bookmark contest. They have now switched to every other year. So we, as teacher librarians, got together and knew that how much our kids love this. So we decided to organize it ourself. We had support from parent groups at different schools to create prizes. In addition to that, we, there was an offering from the Secretary of State to do some professional development around The Joy of Reading, which is a recently published book. And so several of our secondary librarians, along with teachers in their building, have led PD around this. So we decided to make our theme for this year's bookmark contest, The Joy of Reading. So I'm going to ask all of our K2 winners to come up and Tanya Marshall is going to call out their names.
Hi, I'm Tanya Marshall, I'm the librarian at Image Elementary and we have all three K2 winners. So third place goes to Rian Singh and he is a kindergartner. The second place winner in the K2 is Danica Pham. She is a first grader. Congratulations. And then the first place winner is Penny Ralph and she is a first grader.
So I forgot to mention that this was on the district public website and all members of the community could vote. I think we had around 600 votes in each category. So our three five winners, third place from Ellsworth Elementary, Eileen Zaninovich. Opposed?
Want to do a second place?
Okay.
The second place winner is from Image Elementary, fifth grader Andre Vishnevetskyia and he's not here tonight.
And this year's first place winner from Pioneer Elementary is Talia C. Garcia, fourth grader at Pioneer.
Hi, I'm Christina Larachea, I'm the teacher librarian from Frontier Middle School and we have first, second and third place. Our third place winner from Frontier is Victoria McBride, is Victoria here? Our second place winner is Adelia Perav, seventh grade. And our first place winner is Brooke Curry from Y East, Brooke?
Can I take a picture with her or is that allowed? You want to do high school?
Good evening, I'm Scott Tomlinson, teacher librarian at Evergreen High School. All right, so our third place winner is Erin Noble. From Evergreen High School. Our second place winner is Tay Nguyen, also from Evergreen High School. Tay was feeling pretty tired from a lot of theater work recently, so she said she wasn't going to make it. And our first place winner is Evan English from Mountain View High School.
Perfect, thank you.
Great, thank you very much, congratulations to all the winners. Any remarks from the board about the great artistry?
We have some amazing artists at every great level. These are so detailed and thank you guys for putting on the competition for them this year. Thank you.
Just beautiful, I'm just so impressed with creativity and the use of color and the messaging that you're putting out on those bookmarks. And I have a little two-year-old grandson that's going to get one of those because I know he'll love it because he likes to read. So it just, good job.
All right, thank you again. All right, next up is special recognition. It's Asian American and Pacific Islander Month and Craig is going to share some information with us.
This is the board video that our Board of Directors put together to recognize Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Hopefully the volume is okay.
As part of our commitment to celebrating diversity and fostering an inclusive school community, we as a district and school board are participating in Heritage Month celebrations throughout the school year.
This month we honor Asian, American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. This recognition was set in May because it's the month in which the first Japanese immigrants arrived in this country in 1843 and when the transcontinental railroad was completed in 1869. Thanks greatly to the Chinese immigrants who took on the dangerous, backbreaking work that connected the country to the West Coast.
Other AAPI groups came to this country as refugees from wars in Korea and Vietnam and as immigrants chasing the same dream that has drawn immigrants from every corner of this planet. Our native Hawaiians endured an experience that mirrored that of Native Americans with their land taken over by colonists.
Throughout the month, our schools and students will honor Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders by reading books, watching films and creating art that will help them learn about their history. Students will learn about the difficulties they have endured, from being excluded from land ownership to Japanese Americans being interned during World War II, from native Hawaiians fighting to regain land that is sacred to them, to recent hate crimes against Asian Americans who were nonsensically blamed for the COVID-19 epidemic.
Our students will also learn about and celebrate the countless ways Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders contribute to the tapestry of our country in business, government, culture, sports and so many other ways. Please join us in celebrating Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month.
Thank you Craig. Seeing that video reminded me that Director Gonwalt is not feeling well this evening and will not be joining us. All right, we will go ahead and move on to the board consent agenda. Will entertainment, entertain a motion for approval?
I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second?
So moved in second in, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Thank you. And again, we'll do this for the superintendent consent agenda.
I move to adopt the consent agenda as it presented.
Moved in second in, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? All right, we will next move on to a presentation, which is the Evergreen Public Schools Strategic Plan. I'm going to turn this over to Superintendent Boyd.
Yes, thank you very much. We're absolutely thrilled to be able to present to you today our very first public, public event where we're going to show you our strategic plan. It's the culmination of two years of work through two COVID spikes, a levy failure, two budget, big budget reductions and the board's continual insistence that we get this thing done. And I can tell you that we have something that's not just going to be window dressing, but something that is, we feel, is going to impact students positively for the next five years from the classroom to the boardroom. And we're absolutely excited to present that to you today. And we're going to start by having Dr. Tammy Campbell, our fearless guide on the side that's helped lead us through this very deep and profound process, is going to start us off. So Dr. Campbell, I know you're remoted in.
I am here, I am here. Good to see you Superintendent Boyd, members of the board. I've had the opportunity to work behind the scenes to see firsthand the product and I can tell you the way this strategic plan is framed, it really is going to be student-centered. It really will drive improvement at our schools. It's probably one of the better ones that I've seen, I couldn't be prouder of the team. And I'm just going to hand it over to them because you know, in the beginning it's more of me facilitating than it's we do the work together and now it's the district does the work. So I'm going to hand this over and let them share the incredible, incredible structure that is now going to drive continuous improvement both at every classroom across the district as well as at the central office.
Dr. Campbell, do you want to talk a little bit about your guiding principles?
Yes, so we made some commitments that, the first one was that it was not going to be done two or four, it would be done with, and I think we held to that. We wanted to, when it was done, we wanted you to be able to say you had broad stakeholder participation and I think when you look at the data inside the strategic plan, you'll see that. We talked about having student-centered goals and you will see that your four goal areas are all driven by student-centered metrics. And then we have foundations that are called out to build on the work that was already done in your previous partnership. And one of the things that Superintendent Boyd wanted to be sure that we had were metrics and outcomes that could actually be measurable so that you can ensure continuous improvement. And then the last component is research. When we pulled, you know, over almost 100 folks together to identify the strategies for your goal areas, research drove the, sort of the creation of those strategies. And so I feel like we lived by our guiding principles and ultimately when we do that, you have a better product. So I'm going to hand this over now to Superintendent Boyd.
Go ahead and go forward, am I clicking forward? I can do that, huh? So we start with a, just a quote related to our strategic plan. You can see up front, our tagline is "Belonging for Each and Success for All." And those words really encapsulate what we're all about in the strategic plan. So "A Just Cause" is a specific vision of a future that state that does not yet exist, a future state so appealing that people are willing to make sacrifices in order to help advance toward that vision. And that's from Simon Sinek. And from Dr. Tammy Campbell, "A Just Cause is about our future, the world, the school we hope to build." And that's from Dr. Campbell in the Scholar First. See if I can get the next one, whoops, it's not advancing forward. There we go, to the right. One more, okay. So I want to start with the board has operational expectations for the superintendent and the district leadership team. One of the things that you asked me when I first took this job was you wanted me to continue to be a leader for equity, you wanted to make sure that we had good, we kept our finances straight. You wanted to make sure that we had, that I was an instructional leader and you were really clear that you wanted us to continue with our strategic plan. And as I suggested before, through a lot of superintendent change, a couple COVID spikes, some challenges with our levy and budget, it's taken us a little bit longer to get this done, but I feel like we really were able to take the work that was done prior to my arrival, leading into last spring and then turn, really put the meat on the bones of the mission and vision and the pillars that you created with your strategic plan here. And you will, you will be assured that equity is red-threaded throughout this plan and that it is really focused on students, focused on instruction, focused on learning and focused on having improved outcomes for our students. Keep going the wrong way. And then just a quick little slide here to show how this interacts and intersects with our operational expectations. I talked about equity, it's an opportunity for us to share and show our community that we have a plan, that we're working towards continuous improvement and equitable outcomes for our students. We are in the process, Jennifer Jacobson is in the process of creating a way for us to, with a group of folks, look at our finances and align those to our strategic work as well. So that'll be a vehicle, this will be a vehicle to be able to accomplish that. Obviously, this is completely intersects with the learning environment and instructional programs. We have 12 operational expectations and this absolutely intersects profoundly with six of them. I keep going the wrong way here, I'll get it. So this is the beginning of our plan and again, "Belonging for Each, Success for All", this is our strategic plan. I love this picture, it kind of encapsulates what we're all about, belonging and success, it's aspirational. I really do need to thank our communications department for putting together a very beautifully, beautifully graphically designed plan. You'll see, it starts with a table of contents and again, this is not just a plan that has a mission and vision, but this is a plan that has a mission, a vision. We have clear goals and metrics and outcomes that we're aspiring towards and we have a theory of action which shows everybody's job within the organization and what we're supposed to be doing from the district, from the boardroom in the district to our principals, through our teachers, for our students. Lots of people to thank and I started with thanking the board for your persistence and insisting that we get this done for our students. And you, you were the ones that commissioned and started that, so I really need to thank the board for making sure that you held us accountable for getting this thing done. But as you can see, we had many, many people over the two-year period that we've been engaged in this process. 623 community participants, almost 7,000 student participants, 33 committee planning sessions, 16 committee participants and 11 community input events. So there've been lots and lots and lots of interaction with our community to get to the point where we can go out and get this, get this plan now in front of you and in front of our community. So lots of folks to thank and then I just want to start with all of the folks that were on in any part of the strategic planning process, can you stand up please? They're here today? Yes. This represents the inner team of district leaders that showed up time after time and convening after convening to take the input from our community, hone it down, winnow it down into something that's actionable and that is powerful for our students. So I want to thank everybody that participated, all of our district folks here and the board again for your persistence and keeping us on track to get this done. And of course, we couldn't have done this without the incredible support of our facilitator, Dr. Tammy Campbell from the Scholar First. I'm going to turn it over now to Clarissa Hightower who led us through many aspects of this. So Clarissa?
Thank you Superintendent Boyd, good evening board. A particular song comes to mind for me as I am thinking about our strategic plan. Actually, when we first debuted this strategic plan to our building leaders, I actually had a playlist up, but playlists come to mind for me because there's a soundtrack to my life on a day-to-day basis. The song for this one is one from Sam Cooke and it is, it's been a long time coming. I was going to sing it and then I digress. So, and, and, and I likened it to this idea of us nurturing and nourishing a bundle of joy, right? This, this strategic plan for us has been something that we've been working very hard around and looking forward to and so it is almost as if we are bringing our bundle of joy to you all to present. And so as I tap through these components for you, you are going to notice a couple of things. You will notice some items that are familiar to you from last year's work with Education Northwest. So the whats and then the how is what we partnered with the Scholar First and Dr. Tammy Campbell with to put the meat on the bones as John alluded to. And what you see here before you is our Evergreen Public Schools' vision for equity and excellence. The statement below the actual vision itself was something that was crafted on last year, so it is one of our whats and it reads, "Each person in the Evergreen Public Schools' community is a welcomed, included and empowered member of our school district and we work together towards student success." Okay, that's our what? The meet or the how that we added on this year, we began our journey by talking to kids and we asked them, "What helps you feel like you belong and what helps you learn?" And we took that input from our students and we crafted what we hoped each student could say after having their day-to-day experience at their schools. You would ask them about, "What was your, what was your experience today?" We would like for them to be able to say these things. And so this is the vision for student success. I want to read them, not because I don't think you can read, but because of how powerful they are and how they guide our day-to-day, since this is what we want all of our students to experience. And they say, "I am my true self at school and I am loved. We belong, we are seen, heard and empowered. I see myself and others reflected in our learning and in our school. I am an independent learner who is eager to learn, set goals and work towards my dreams and we thrive academically." And this is our vision of what we'd like for our students to experience on a day-to-day basis in our buildings, okay? The work from our year one efforts is the mission statement for this that you see at the top. So this is our mission statement, came out of our first committee's work. It reads, "Evergreen Public Schools removes inequities by supporting, affirming and growing each student to prepare them for success while they are with us and after they graduate." Okay? The meets that was added this year are our core values. These will be our guiding principles, our compass if you will. What do we come back to as we make decisions related to our students? That's our core values and those are at the top of the list, equity, inclusion and belonging, excellence through growth, empowerment through learning, keeping the students centered and excellence through learning as well. These core values don't just apply to our students, they also apply to the adults in our district as well. All right, this entire page is actually from our efforts on last year and these are our promised areas or our pillars. I don't know if you all remember, I know you do, I shouldn't say that, I know you do because you were involved in our efforts to go out to the community and show these to them and get their input on them. And these are our promised areas to our community. What are we going to focus on in this strategic plan? We wanted to make sure we had the what down before we started building the how. And so the whats are, teaching and learning, school environment, family and community and employee engagement. So these will be our focuses for the strategic plan. What you are going to hear a little bit later on from my colleagues is focused on the very first two promised areas, which are teaching and learning and school environment. And so our work with Dr. Campbell has helped us to operationalize both the vision and the mission via these two promised areas. And we will continue to work on the following two in the coming years. On next year we'll begin that work, but we had to make sure we had these two ready to go. And so the descriptor or the indicators underneath each of these is what my colleagues will be expanding upon. So for teaching and learning, we will support all of our students. Our classrooms will be, will be safe places where students feel a sense of belonging and are motivated to learn every day. And then for school environment, everyone will feel safe, welcomed and valued for who they are anywhere in the school. And we will create spaces that allow all students to learn. And you are going to see what that looks like in, in a moment. I'm going to tell you, after we talked about what our whats are, we had to think about the how and when you think about how, it gets you to thinking about goals that you have to set. What goals are we going to set for ourselves to reach these hows? And here are our goals, we have four goal areas that we're going to be focusing on. And the graphic you see before you, you have three columns. The first one shows you each of the goal areas. The first being a culture of safety and belonging, I'm, you heard a lot about that prior to this. It is one of the prerequisites for sustained academic success is a culture of safety and belonging. Then we have foundations for success as our next goal area, followed by growth and mastery of grade level standards and then of course, post diploma ready. All of our schools will have two goals. Every school will have the goal of culture of safety and belonging. And then based on the grade level of the school, they will pick between goal areas two, three and four. So for our elementary schools, for foundations for success, that's for early elementary. Growth and mastery of grade level standards is for later elementary and middle school. And then post diploma ready is for our high schools. As you can see, we have already identified metrics that we will use to see how we are doing. We have to inspect what we expect and that is our metrics. We'll be using youth truth and discipline data and attendance for our culture of safety belonging, our Y kids assessment, smarter balance and WEDA, which is our language acquisition assessment for foundations for success. Grades, smarter balance again, unit assessments and youth truth for growth and mastery standards. And then finally transcript analysis in our HPPB, which is our high school, high school and beyond plan, sorry. And so those are the metrics we'll be using for post, post diploma ready. The follow, following column where outcomes live, I'm going to allow my colleagues to go a little bit deeper into that, but for each of the goal areas, there are also outcomes that we are working towards and those are, those are articulated in that last column. And you get to hear a lot more about that as we dig deeper into each of the goal areas, which all include an outcome, strategies and phases. And my colleagues are going to come up and talk with you a little bit more about those three things and we're going to start, no we're not. No, we're not. First, there's one more component. It's actually really important. The next component talks about how this all connects from our students all the way to district-level leadership, including yourselves. So Dr. Ream's going to come up and talk about that.
Thank you. It's been a long, long time coming. I'm excited. I'm, I'm excited. So she brought it up. It was in my spirit. And tonight, we are truly celebrating just the, the manifestation of two years of work and your insistence as leaders, as the Board of Directors in this, in this process. And so you'll notice, you know, with plans, we have mission and vision and all of that is beautiful, but we now have a theory of action. And you've insisted to be a part of that theory of action. So if you'll notice, if you look closely at this theory of action, it goes from the classroom with our scholars all the way here to the boardroom, starting with if the board and district will do these things, and then principals will, then educators will, and then all of those beautiful things that Clarissa just described around our scholars experiencing and believing that they can be their true selves and they can have the success that we have articulated in this plan, those things will be manifested. So we present to you tonight our theory of action. And in just a moment, I would like to, I'm clicking too fast. I'm going warp speed here because I'm excited. But now I just want to say, the next few slides and the next few presenters who come before you represent the work side of this. So I want to pause just a moment and thank Craig and Erin Winter Song for the beautiful documents that you've just witnessed in terms of the, the cover page, the mission, the vision, all of those things. And so can we just give our communications team a round of applause? Because now you're about to see what it looks like when we roll up our sleeves and put together some action plans and, and steps and strategies. And so the slides that you are about to see are things that we are continuing to do in collaboration with our stakeholders. You're going to hear how community members and different, different people in different positions in the organizations contributed to the work that, that will allow us to execute this plan over the next few years. You'll see things in different colors. So in each of the phases, in each of the goal areas, you'll see different phases. We've identified three phases. Because one thing we know, as wonderful as it is to have all of these research-based strategies, we also have to follow best practice when it comes to implementing change. We can't do everything well all at once. So you'll see a green phase. The green phase is going to be what we do in phase one with all of our schools across our system. And Clarissa articulated that every school will have goal area one, culture of safety and belonging, where they will have to articulate a plan. How are we going to make sure that we create that culture in our schools? And then based on their grade level, they'll pick goal area two, goal area three, or goal area four. And you're going to hear a little bit more about what that means. So without further ado, and without any more singing, I'm going to bring up Jamila to do culture of safety and belonging.
All right. I will not sing. Spare you all that. Good evening. Good to see you all. So I'm going to talk through the goal area of culture of safety and belonging. And so I'll give you a minute just to like, look at the document in front of you, because I know we just went through quite a few materials. And so this goal area, if you orient yourself, there's three columns. We have outcomes, building strategies, and district strategies. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the different parts. But first, I want to talk about process. And so we went through a process, and I would say this process to define this goal area didn't start this year. It really began with the findings of our equity audit in 2020. Clarissa also has been engaging with the district advisory, the district equity advisory committee over the past few years to get their input about the shifts that need to happen in our system. And so when Clarissa Kalepiland, who's the Director of Athletics and Discipline, and myself convened our planning team of over 25 people in February, we already had a little bit of an idea of a purpose and how we needed to really think about culture, a culture of safety and belonging. So we took research articles in that group and we started to look at the evidence-based practices on safety and belonging. And this is where we started to identify the strategies that you see listed in the columns. So our hope is that safety and belonging really is the foundation upon which transformation will flourish in our district. And so goal area one is going to be critical for all the work that we do. And so on the left side, you see the three outcomes. So each student feels safe in their school community, each student is empowered, and each student feels culturally accepted, welcomed, and encouraged, and, and an encouraged part of the community. And so I also just want to name, I know Superintendent Boyd named this earlier, but the operational expectations. And I want to particularly name the one around removing barriers found in the student experience. And so I want to highlight one of our strategies where we're really thinking about how we really put action to that. So what does it mean to really remove barriers found in the student experience? So in the phase one, building strategies, you see two green boxes. Create ongoing opportunities for student voice with an intentional focus on students farthest from educational justice to inform school improvement, and provide students with leadership opportunities with intentional focus on students farthest from educational justice inside and outside the classroom. So our work in this goal area is not just for us as adults to come to students and tell them what we're going to do to fix what we, or shift, what we need to shift in our system. Our intention is really to leverage our student voice, to have our students talk to us about what the barriers are. And so we will continue to grow structures such as our board rep structures and having students on our school board. We'll continue to grow our safe or students advocating for equity structures. We'll continue to build additional use of equity teams and equity transformation cycles. And all of these are ways for us to really put to action and listen to student voice and really center student voice. That's one of our core values, is to be student-centered in our decision-making. And so this strategy is what we're asking our buildings to put into their school improvement plans and really start to think about that, which we actually just launched with them today, which is really exciting. And we're going to talk more about that process here in a little bit. So before I hand it off, I just want to name, I'm like, got lost in my notes. So excited. Okay, okay. So, so one, I just want to name that we're really trying to put the humanization into this process as we talk about curriculum, as we talk about instruction, as we talk about strategies and practices. We really need to remember the people that we're working with. And so in order for us to create a culture of safety and belonging, we have to start by really centering the people and centering their perspectives and voices. So we're really confident that our improvement is going to be centered in the human experience. We're also really confident that our leaders and staff are committed to student voice and to growing strategies in this area. And then you'll see on the right side, there's a set of district strategies, and there's a whole set of things that we're going to be doing in the district office to really create some structure in order to support our schools to do that. So as you may have heard Clarissa say before, diversity in our district is a fact, inclusion is the act. And so this goal area, I'm like, it's church in here. But, but the goal area here is really describing how we get to that, how we put inclusion into action. So I'm going to hand it now to Bobby, and she's going to talk to us about goal area two with our early learners.
Thank you, Jamila. Good evening. So nice to see all of you. We are going to transition to foundations for success. And I had the privilege of working with my partner, Scott Monroe, along with Galen Mills and many of our early learning members across the district, from community members to coaches to classroom teachers who have a strong lens and passion for our early learners. And that includes our pre-K students, our, our birth to five students. And so we leverage this work through the lens of social emotional readiness through kindergarten and bridging our PK to kindergarten supports, as well as our academic readiness through third grade. We also focused our, an outcome on our multilingual learners during this process. And most importantly, when we think about our bridge from PK to kindergarten, is those community partnerships. And so really looking across the board in Evergreen of what we have available, what services and supports we have with our partnerships, and how we can bridge the gap of our families and students who don't have access to early learning opportunities. So that will be part of the work we do in the, through the lens of our foundations for success. And then we will also look at our family partnerships. What does that look like once we get into our kindergarten, second, third grade experience? And how do we look through the lens of an asset-based opportunities for our students? And how do we work with our families to let them know how we are connecting with each child? And we have building strategies built in within these foundations for success that look at the student narrative, the student portrait, and looking at them through the lens of the whole child and what makes them successful on a day-to-day experience, both academically and through the SCL lens. And I mentioned earlier that we specifically created a multilingual outcome. We feel that it is incredibly important to provide strategic support and outcomes for multilingual students. And so we are looking to create strategies and supports for our students who need language opportunities within the classroom setting. So we are super excited about targeting our early learners so that they are ready as they transition into our intermediate to middle school experience. Thank you. And next up is Tilly.
Good evening. It's nice to be here. I just wanted to say, so this, this is goal area number three, and it's growth and mastery of grade level standards. And I, I had the honor of working with, with Greg Brown and Carrie Fensler as facilitators in this goal group. I wanted to also say that this was co-constructed. So we, as, as was said before, we had stakeholders across the district in, in different, various positions in the district and co-constructed. So we met many times to work on, on building strategies and think about, you know, how, how we're going to implement this across the district. So you can see there that the, on the left-hand side, we have the outcome. So there are two outcomes. Each student demonstrates growth toward mastery of grade level priority standards through multiple pathways. And then our second outcome is each student understands their strengths and a pathway for growth to support their desired future. So I, I want to also emphasize here, if you take a look at the metrics there, you have grades, SBA, unit assessments, and youth truth. And so we have student voice component in this as well. I want to highlight, so as you look, you, you heard about the phases. So green is the first phase. And that, we, we know that phases can last, it, it may take a year, it may take a little bit longer, and it may be a little bit shorter than that, but that's why we named them phases. So I really want to highlight the green area that you see there. So there are two boxes there under building strategies. And those, those are common, those two are common within goal area two, three, and four. So that's the first phase that we're going to begin with. The first one has to do with guaranteed and viable curriculum. We believe that that's, that's where it needs to start, so that we're implementing that with fidelity. And then alongside that, we have embedded that, we call it the EPS, High Leverage Practices. So that's another strategy. So as we think about that, as we think about the district strategies that go along with that, we want to make sure that at the district level, we support the buildings and what they're doing. So ongoing teacher learning through district professional development. So things like job alikes, PLC, our coaching, our coaching structure is really important to take, you know, to be in the buildings and, and work with our leaders and our, our teams to make sure that we're implementing the strategies that we're talking about. So I don't want to confuse you here, but as you look at those two green areas, so it says embed EPS High Leverage Practices. So that's one strategy that contains, so the practices, there are 13 of them in one document. So, so as a group, stakeholders met and we co-constructed this, we looked at research and decided from different frameworks all around, here are the 13 practices that we believe in the teaching and learning cycle are important for teachers to implement in the classroom. Teachers know about these already. It's, it's, it's not new, but we're just naming that and then making sure that we're acting upon these to move our kids forward. So there are 13 stra, or practices, I don't want to interchange those words, practices. And I'm just going to call them the baker's dozen, 13, so you remember that, right? So they're divided into four areas. So there is planning, instruction, assessment, and evaluation. And I don't believe you have a link to that right now, but those 13 are in those particular areas. Things like clear focus, explicit instruction, feedback. Those are some of the practices that we're focusing on. So in the buildings, we know that in the teaching and learning cycle, those are things we focus on, on a daily basis. We, we don't isolate those. Those are not in isolation. So buildings will be focusing on those. And then through data points that they have, they might determine that, hey, we need to shore up a little bit more on feedback, right? We need to shore up a little bit more on clear focus. Whatever, whatever the, the piece that they find from that data, they can do. But always remembering that those 13 practices are things that we do daily, and we don't do those in isolation. So that's what I wanted to really highlight here, is that we have those two strategies in two, three, and four, and that's what we're going to be focusing on in the, in the first phase. You also see some other areas there. You see the yellow and the blue. We're also, in, in the second phase, going, going to be focusing on data protocol and on also another protocol for conferencing. And those are coming, those are things that we as a district are, are going to work on. But right now for phase one, we're going to support buildings in GVC, Guaranteed and Viable Curriculum, and then in the embedded, the High Leverage Practices. So there you have it for, for goal number three.
Good evening, Board of Directors and Student Board of Directors and Superintendent Boyd. I'm here to discuss with you, did I do it right correctly, our post diploma ready goal area four. And I'm going to talk to you more about the process as to how we got to where we are. So to complete goal area four, the Director of CCTE, Justin Birmingham, and I sought to bring together a diverse group of voices that would provide us insight and expertise into the many facets of what it means to be post diploma ready. The group had members representing career guidance specialists, building administrators, counselors, teachers, district-level staff, special education, multilingual learners, and parents. A continuing priority for us in the district is a focus on preparing students for college and career readiness. Yet the measures of what it means to be post diploma ready varies widely. Thus, it was the goal of group four to read current research about college and career readiness and identify two to three outcomes that when implemented with fidelity would move us closer to ensuring every student who graduates from Evergreen Public Schools is college, career, and life-ready. The three outcomes this group agreed with were most critical to preparing our students and providing students rigorous academic experience, oh, excuse me, are providing students rigorous academic experiences. You could only see one of ours. You could only see one of ours on here, not all three. And, yeah, the very, well, oh, you used to meet at the very top there. So providing students rigorous academic experiences, having students sustain on-time credit attainment starting in ninth grade, and providing opportunities in content areas for post-secondary opportunity visioning. It was important to the group to refrain from isolating our outcomes into grade-specific bands. Rather, we focused on envisioning outcomes that address the entire high school experience. And our strategies are designed to adapt to phases of a high school student's career, culminating in a student who graduates from EPS being prepared with the skills and tools needed for whatever path they choose. You will notice, not on here, but on our other documents, you may notice, that our third outcome is still in progress, which is the post-secondary visioning within content areas and classrooms. Because we want to gather more information from our stakeholders to determine how the district office can support this meaningful work that takes place in classrooms. So it's really about content-embedded work where students can think about what they want to work toward after high school and thinking about really intentional ways of doing that. And so we're going to come back to our stakeholders and get some more information and then revise the strategies for that. That unfinished aspect of goal four speaks to the importance of the work of the strategic plan and how it is responsive rather than directive. And success in goal four relies on the three goals that come before it. To prepare students entering high school for mastery of academic content in relevant and rigorous courses aligned to their, identified graduation pathway from their high school and beyond plan. It also illustrates the interconnectedness of the strategic plan goal areas and how they help us realize our district mission to remove inequities by supporting, affirming, and growing each student to prepare them for success while they are with us and after they graduate. Thank you.
So as you can see, a lot of work, a lot of collaboration, a lot of back and forth with stakeholders to make sure that we are doing the work to meet their needs and to be responsive as an organization. One thing that we've been committed to all year is that the documents we create, like our school improvement plans and so forth, aren't just things that sit on shelves, but that they live and that they actually inform our work. And you see that beginning with this strategic plan as well. So as we begin to tie this up, I just wanted to highlight how we're building this through line in our work. So you see the SIP alignment piece where we're tying it all together. So now we've revised our school improvement planning documents because sometimes the question is, you have a strategic plan, you have a school improvement plan, how do they all connect, right? And so what we have here is our school improvement plan, and you'll see in the blue, the goal area that we're focusing on from the strategic plan, as well as the green strategy that schools are focusing on this year. So earlier today, in this very room, we had all of our elementary principals interacting with this document and pretty much grateful that they didn't have to draw the connections. They didn't have to go to a strategic planning document, figure out how they were going to embed it in the SIP. We, Ruth and team have already done a lot of the work for them and embedded High Leverage Practices as resources for them to select based on their school context. So just wanting to show that we are really trying to thread things together in a way that's user-friendly. I've had the privilege of partnering with our TLE team, and one of the first things that they said when I got here in July is we, we really need to develop some key performance indicators. We need a report card. And so we enlisted some support from Stern Analytics, Paul Stern, and he's gone back five years, as you can see in this draft report card, to pull data now that we have our goal areas so that we can begin to track the trends and patterns and to see if the, the goals we set and the work we are doing are having the desired impact. So you'll see, I'll point a couple of things out to you. On the left, you see elementary, middle, and high school milestones. And then you'll also see in a little slim column, G1, G2, G3, G4. And what we have done is align those scorecard indicators to the goal areas of the strategic plan. Just another way we are tying all of the pieces together. So when people are going to say, well, how do you know how well you're doing? Well, this is one of the tools that we'll use to inform us. This, you will see, has the attendance data, it has our exit data, that our students aren't living necessarily in our Yale services that we are exiting them from program. You have our SBA data for math and ELA, our I-ready and so on. So this will be a place that we can populate as the years pass to evaluate our performance and be transparent with the impact it's having. And here's the timeline of all the things. We're here tonight, you see board presentation. We're excited, so and that you see some May-June dates and some dates you actually see listed on there. We'll have a sit-down with the superintendent opportunity for our leader to convey to the community once this is approved. What is in our plan and what to expect from schools. We'll partner with schools to do presentations. We have, we already have a date for the Strategic Plan Summit where our leaders and teachers are coming together to really dive into those strategies to ensure that we have, we are calibrated and that they have the resources that they need to begin implementation. We'll continue, in the fall, we'll launch with our staff and community presentations. We'll have some resources that I'll share with you so that, again, our staff and community have a place to go to, to know how we are supporting them. Again, this is just an example. We have Canvas, which is one of the learning tools we use with our leaders to relay information. And so this will be one of the vehicles. Nathan Lee has already begun to populate a website with all of our strategic plan elements so that, again, people know where to go for resources, what we mean in terms of our goal areas and strategies, and again, the documentation of this process and all the work, the contributions that have gone into this plan. And so our next steps, upon approval, we will begin to implement the balance of the socialization plan. We want to get the word out that we, we have a plan and we want our stakeholders involved and, and helping us, working alongside us as we implement this work. We'll continue our website and module development and other resources for professional learning. And as Clarissa alluded to earlier, we'll begin to flush out the family engagement and employee engagement pillars. But we knew that it was critical, given our needs around instruction and academics, to really prioritize teaching and learning in school environment in this round, and that's what we did. So with that, I just want to say thank you. Thank you for trusting us with this amazing work. I want to say thank you to Scholar First and how Dr. Campbell just got us together with all the different groups. And we had a steering team, district leaders, we had a host of teams and peoples helping us. We had a major core strategic planning team that some of you participated in. And again, we appreciate the leadership of the Scholar First in, in this process, so.
Dr. Williams, might I say something briefly?
Yes.
Board members, I hope you listened to what's unique about this particular strategic plan. When you heard the presenters talking, you, you should have noticed it was all about students, student outcomes, student work, focusing in on students as opposed to focusing in on what I would describe as what the adult activity is. It's focusing on outcomes for students. So that's one hallmark of the process. But I hope you also heard the ownership and the expertise and the work that all of these leaders across your districts, your district now have. They own the plan. This isn't about anyone else now but them. And that's the, the other sign of a good process is when the, the folks who are actually doing the work now own and can lead the work. So thank you, team. Awesome job.
Thank you. And so we'll open up for any questions?
While, while they're waiting for questions, a special thank you to Dr. Williams who quite evidently and obviously led this process. Incredible job of pulling people together, leading in in a way that is actionable, powerful, and is going to direct our work for years to come. So thank you, thank you, thank you for all that you've done to support this.
Thank you, thank you. You've laid a good foundation, this one.
I wanted to echo what Dr. Campbell said about student-centered. That's what, the one theme I saw through the entire presentation. And I've seen it with the work that's being done with the student board reps and how you've gotten the principal from legacy to work with the students to create the structure for next year to make sure that there is representation from each high school. The way, work you've been doing with SAFE, which came out of the Equity Advisory Committee two years ago, I think, and how that's grown throughout the district. You've been doing a really good job with getting students involved with this process so that they know what's about them and for them. So thank you.
Go ahead, Bigra. I think what's most striking to me, and I think should be of, what's the word I want to use? Achievement and, and hopefulness about everything that we're looking at. Because we know our kids can achieve great things. And what I love about this is about excellence for all. It's not about everybody doing the exact same thing at the same time, trying to either dumb it down so everybody succeeds, or it's about everybody being able to excel to their ultimate potential. And I think that's the piece that is really important to acknowledge, that that vision for all students being able to be successful and clearing that path for them to have that happen so that when they walk into school every day, it's about, I'm here because it's exciting, I'm learning new things, and I know people here recognize what I can do. That's, I think, is the least we can offer a child. Thank you for that work.
I, well, I have a, well, I'll have like a comment first, but I think it really ties together everything that, you know, the board envisioned in the beginning. Because I know for me, like, having some of our key performance indicators was really important. And tying it back to, you know, just the importance that every student can be successful and giving them that belief, right? Because that will build culture and then all the other things will follow. So I really like the plan, but I do have a logistic question. So it said first reading, and we talked about it mean to be approved. So next board meeting, we're bringing it for second reading?
That is correct.
Is there anything that we need to do this evening for that or just bring it back for a second reading? Do we need to vote?
We wanted to give you an opportunity to see it and comment and ask any questions before we actually brought a final draft to you to approve, so.
Thank you for this work. It's been a long time coming and it, it just, well, the way I've been describing it to people is that this kind of coherency in district leadership and planning and execution, it's the first time in Evergreen's history that it's been this clear and coherent. We know that all of the elements were there. We have always had key performance indicators for as long as I can remember. And everybody in the system has been so sincere about student safety, student achievement, student inclusion. So having it articulated in a common way with that many stakeholders, that's a heavy, heavy lift to me. And I appreciate that. I think the board will have some work to do now to look at our own policies, our results and expectations, and our governance, culture policies to see if there's a way to align ourselves with the good outcomes of this work. And I'm happy to do that work with you. So, yeah. Having been a participant in, I guess it was the large district group and the development of those, the statement of values and the statements of identity, and it was a, it was a really encouraging process throughout to, and really, I guess, trying to pick the right word, maybe I shouldn't be so, but it was, it was exciting. Okay, that's the one. It was exciting to see these ideas begin to gel together. And it was good for me to participate in the process. And I'm, I'm grateful for the inclusion that everybody extended to us all because I, I learned more about the sincerity of the folks who do their work. And, and got to know them a little better, too. So thank you. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Do we need to take any action or are we just going to come back for a second reading next time?
Want to allow our student board reps, do you have any?
Absolutely.
Any comments?
I don't have any questions or anything like significant, but I'm just like so thankful that I get to be a part of this and like learn so much about this and just like my whole experience has been like, I, I've just learned so much and I'm really thankful to be here and I'm thankful for everyone here.
Thank you.
I'm just going to say thank you for your hard work.
So do we need to move forward and vote for a first reading this evening or we just bring it back for a second reading?
Bring it back for a second.
Since it's not policy, that we can just.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Next is Superintendent Report. Superintendent Boyd?
Yes, and I'll be brief here. We had a long strategic planning presentation there. Bittersweet news, sweet for her and tough for us, is Clarissa Hightower has decided to resign her position and at the end of the year will be leaving us. We have her until June 30th. And more to come on that, more celebrations about her incredible job that she's done throughout her tenure here to build a foundation and actually found our diversity, equity, and inclusion department and usher the department through some amazing transformational work that we're all benefiting from here. So just a huge thank you to her for that and of course, more to come. We do have Nick Hanson at Crestline did resign his position, took a position in a different district. So that, the first thing that I do is I email current principals and ask if anyone is interested in a transfer before we decide next steps on that job. So I'm in the process of that. So Crestline Elementary is open. Had some great events that I attended in the last week. One at Mill Plain, they brought OMC in and had students do various different stations for, in the scientific little activities, that was phenomenal. Had a chance to serve pizza there and served popcorn at Covington. For some reason, they see me walking in the door and they put me to work serving food. Not sure what to make of that, but they had a phenomenal open house for incoming sixth graders to help those students get comfortable and acquainted with the school. So that's a couple of great events. Our ESDF Gala is coming up. We have 320 people that have registered, the biggest number that they've ever had. So I've been personally getting involved with that, with ESDF. They've got great leadership, great vision to move forward, and it's particularly important right now when we're having budget challenges. And so that's going to be a great event. Hopefully, folks can think about going to that, and I think there's still time. And, yeah, we're having a, on May 24th, we're, we've invited folks that have expressed concern about the budget to engage in a conversation about the medication plans we have, and that's from 5:30 to 7:30. We'll have information in the board update and pack it from there. So that's my board report for you.
Great, thank you, John. All right, next is a department update. We're going to call Dr. Williams back up to make the introduction.
We're good to go. So for our TLE update, we're going to have a presentation by Karen Fox and her team on the HART program. So we'll have them come up. And they're here.
Good evening, good evening, Student Board of Directors and Board of Directors and Superintendent Boyd.
Boyd. Thank you for letting us share a bit of information about our HART program. The first thing that I want to let you know is that we just received some academic data that was important enough that I wanted to revise the presentation document, and so I've shared that with Lori. And what you'll see tonight highlights a little bit of that new information, and then you'll have full access to that, in case you'd like to look at that in more detail. So, the HART program. In 2020, we combined three programs under the umbrella of HART because they had overlapping purpose of trying to meet the needs, better meet the needs, and remove barriers for our students and families who were experiencing particular challenges and barriers to their academic success. And so, we combined our Family Resource Centers, our Foster Care Program, and our McKinney-Vento Program under the umbrella of HART to, and then enlisted the help of a couple of our students to help us design a logo that symbolized the purpose of the program. So, tonight, I'd like to introduce you to kind of the heart, if you will, of the HART program. Minus, we have one person who's missing tonight, just had some conflict that we're unfortunately not able to have him here with us, but I do want to allow them to introduce themselves. And then I'm gonna turn it over to the team to share some highlights very briefly about two areas. That's Family Resource Center and Foster Care. And then spend most of our attention tonight on McKinney-Vento Program, which is the program that supports our students and families who are experiencing homelessness. So, first, first introduction is Matt Young, and Matt is not able to be with us tonight, so I do want to let you know that he is also part of our HART core team. And Matt supports students who are unaccompanied by a parent or guardian, and high school students.
Good evening, my name is Michelle Gaskin, and I am the McKinney-Vento and Foster Care Liaison.
Hi, my name is Nathan Schubert, and I'm the Unaccompanied Youth Coordinator for Middle Schools.
Good evening, I am Shay Shira, and I am the McKinney-Vento HART Tutoring TOSA.
Hi, I'm Mac English, and I'm the Unaccompanied Youth Coordinator for High Schools.
Hi, I'm Katie Greer, and I am the McKinney-Vento Support Clerk and for the program.
Hello, I'm Melanie Green, and I oversee the Family Resource Center program. Next slide, please.
It's not a clicker. Yeah, I should've told you we're on here. There you go. There you go.
Okay. All right. So, we currently have resource centers at 24 sites, 22 elementary schools plus Legacy and Evergreen High School, and we help build connections between families in the school. So, we assist with many resources and provide a lot of service coordination to enrich our student experience and also help connect and engage our families. So, we do that through connecting families to basic support needs. You see a lot of that in pantries and just those critical items that help support our families, meet those basic needs. We offer some housing assistance referrals through Housing Partnership Programs in conjunction with Council for the Homeless. We also have a lot of community resources available to us by leveraging local organizations and nonprofits that actually bring services into our schools that we can then offer out to our families and community. We do a lot of student enrichment opportunities that support students before, during, and after school, including bilingual preschool. We have some summer opportunities. We do a lot of clubs and coach basketball and soccer and do a lot of fun things to help provide those opportunities for our kids. And then we also engage families through many different school-wide events and workshops, including financial literacy, nutrition, parenting. We coordinate those OMC events that you attended, they're a lot of fun for families, and just do a lot, what we can, so we can open our doors to our families and community and bring them and invite them inside. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Michelle. Thank you.
Okay, so I'll speak real briefly about our Foster Care Program. We work really closely with Department of Children, Youth, and Families to identify students in our district who are in Foster Care. We currently have 170 students in our district who are in Foster Care or have been at some point this school year. Some of the important requirements and services that we provide for them are continued enrollment in their school of origin, which includes transportation to and from school all across our district, outside of our district, just to keep school as their stability while they're moving around while in Foster Care. And then we also provide free tutoring for any student in Foster Care who, either who reports they're interested or who qualifies based off of some criteria that Shay will talk about in a couple of minutes. And then our McKinney-Vento Program. McKinney-Vento is a federal law that ensures stability for students in school who are experiencing homelessness. That includes families who are couch surfing, in hotels, in shelters, those who are literally unhoused and either camping or sweeping in vehicles. The main requirements that we provide, or that we are required to provide our continued enrollment in the school of origin, just like with Foster Care, again, transporting to and from school all across the Clark County Portland metro area. About a third of our McKinney-Vento students, we send buses outside of our district boundary to pick them up. We provide food and the general basic needs for them. We waive all of their school fees and fines so that they can participate in all activities like any other student would be able to. Free tutoring, and then we also work with families and work closely with counselors and family and community resource coordinators in school to help families navigate community resources as well. So, just a little picture of what homelessness is looking like in our district. We are currently at 1,325 students who are, who have experienced homelessness at some point during this school year, which you can see is a pretty drastic increase from the last couple of years. And we, we've attributed that to just the rising housing costs in our area, as well as the fallout from the eviction moratorium ending and all of those evictions finally going through, leaving a lot of our families without housing. So, a big success that we are really excited to spotlight within our McKinney-Vento Program is the support that we're providing for unaccompanied youth. You saw two of our coordinators here tonight, and they work really closely with students in our middle and high schools who are experiencing homelessness, but on top of that, are not living with a parent or a legal guardian. So, some of them are couch surfing with friends or living with other relatives. Sometimes they're completely unhoused and living alone out of a vehicle or at a youth shelter. So, we provide just really, you know, intensive case management support for students to be that, just that connection to school and be a safe, trusted adult in their lives. So, that looks like transporting them to and from medical appointments or accessing benefits throughout our area, providing basic needs and resource navigation through all the different systems and, that are really complicated to navigate. Providing housing resources and referrals for our older students as they're graduating high school when, when available. Ongoing support with food assistance and access to EBT food benefits and food pantries, helping them get set up with health insurance, access to all their vital records that they might not have access to anymore, so that they can obtain jobs, apply for college, all of those things. And then I missed the highlighted part at the very beginning. So, 23% of all of our students experiencing homelessness are currently unaccompanied as well, so a little over 300. Some really positive outcomes from staffing our three unaccompanied youth coordinators. We've been able to reengage students who are unaccompanied and withdrew from school or who stopped attending, like, around COVID and didn't come back to school, and so reaching out to them to get them re-enrolled and re-engaged in school. Providing a lot of advocacy and mentorship, help, just helping that bridge between home and school and working with counselors and teachers and other school staff to help students feel comfortable. Improved access to getting tutoring if they have missed a lot of school and need to get caught up. And then we are seeing increasing graduation rates as well since pre-COVID. And the 2019-20 school year is a little harder to measure, just because that's when we went into distance learning, and so graduation requirements were a little more flexible during that year. But we're still seeing an increase overall, and hopefully, we'll be able to share with you after the end of this school year, an even higher number of youth in our program who have graduated high school. And I'll turn it over to Shay to talk about our tutoring program.
Good evening. I am going to spotlight our elementary reading tutoring program. Our HART program, our HART tutoring program, is currently providing before and after-school tutoring for any eligible McKinney-Vento student. In the 2021-22 school year, we served 46 students with our tutoring services, and during this current school year, we are currently serving 144 students. We have 111 trained tutors in our district currently, and they are all consistently putting tutoring efforts in at every elementary school. So, you can see here in our graph that every elementary school currently has tutoring services. We've had many positive outcomes this year with our McKinney-Vento HART tutoring. We've had academic growth in reading and language development for all participating students. We've had multiple elementary students at or nearing grade level in reading, and our tutors are reporting that there is an increased connection to caring adults and the school community for our tutoring students. And our tutors are also reporting that they are having more professional growth being, being tutors this year. In the following slides, you're going to see just a story of what some of our wins are in our McKinney-Vento HART tutoring program. As you can see here, over 52% of our current tutoring students have made three or more levels of reading growth. We have 11.7% of our students who have already met grade level benchmark rating. And we have a very diverse population. This is the race and ethnicity of our HART McKinney-Vento tutoring students. And lastly, we are currently serving students in every grade level. So, that is a little bit about our McKinney-Vento HART tutoring program. Karen?
Just before I, I say a couple of thanks words, I would like to add regarding the tutoring data, that we have, we have point of need and referral tutoring that has been happening for, for years. And over the last two years, we have made the addition, and that's what Shay was speaking to, of a systemic and systematic effort to seek out the students who are needing the most support in their reading development, starting with reading first, because we have the system set up for that, and we have intervention resources in place. The intent is to grow it, not only through our K-12 system, but also to grow it across math content as well. And then the last point about that academic data is that one of the ways that we prioritize for offering tutoring, excuse me, I've got a little tickle. One of... One of the ways that we prioritize for our tutoring services is reaching out first, when we can, reaching out first to students who are potentially three or more grade levels below in their current reading development. And so, when we see that we have 11% of our tutoring students who are now at grade level, I, I just want to point out how profound that is. That's a celebration when a student is just almost there. It's a larger celebration every time we're able to support students who have a little few steps to go, and also many, many steps. It represents a lot of hard work and really good systematic efforts. So, I just wanted to make sure you were aware of that as well. And then lastly, we'll leave you with just a shout-out to staff in general. In, in many ways, every adult in our system, in our system in EPS, supports students who are receiving supports in the HART program. And we've just captured a few highlights here. This team, again, listed, and then also naming a few of the points of contact in our schools that help us to create that strong network. And with that, we would love to also share a little bit more in-depth, maybe in the fall, about some of the, about the other two program supports that encompass the HART program.
Great, thank you. Do we have any questions for the team?
I was wondering, you said you have 111, 111 trained tutors. Who are they? Are they volunteers, are they staff?
They're staff.
Staff, okay.
Yeah. We do have a few substitutes. Most of the tutors are currently contracted employees.
And they're probably already in the buildings where the students need the, based on that graph where it was spread out throughout the district?
Ideally, not, not always. Shay, are you able to speak to, to that?
So, our, all of our tutors are either paraeducators, certificated substitutes, classified substitutes, or certificated teachers. And yes, most of them are at the building, but then we also have a full-time virtual tutor who provides those services. And then, in addition, we have probably a handful of tutors that are willing to travel and are traveling to multiple elementary schools as well.
Thank you.
So, are, are the tutors compensated for their time, or is this a volunteer arrangement?
They are compensated for their time.
Is it a supplemental contract? Or?
I imagine it's extra time.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you for the work you're doing, it's really important. We can't believe how much that number's grown on our homeless students.
It has grown a lot, and we have really tremendous, tremendous efforts, this team and beyond, so.
Yeah.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, next up is board comments. These are comments by the school board. Do we have anything this evening?
I want to say that I went with John to Sensedental Elementary to do empathy interviews with fifth graders, and it was really timely with the strategic plan, because you can see how important that work is going to be to these students and how important belonging and safety and just so many of the threads touched on by the strategic plan are to the students. And it was really a singular experience, sitting there and talking to kids and just asking them, "How are they doing? How do they feel? What their wishes are? What their fears are?" Yeah.
Great, thanks, Jackie.
Well, I, I just wanted to talk a little bit about one of my most
Well, I just wanted to talk a little bit about, one of my most favorite activities every year is the children's culture parade. Rob and I were there with John. And, you know, I've been doing it for a long time and those, every year, it's just so fun. And what I love about it is the kids being able to celebrate where everybody's from. You know, we all have our DNA and where our, you know, what cultures we're from and what parts of the world that we all kind of stem from. And it's fun to see the kids really delve into that and celebrate who they're with. And some of them had costumes, some of them had fun art projects that they showed who they were with. And it was fun, all the hi, hellos or highs we were getting in foreign languages from kids in all the different countries that they were coming from. But it's always a fun event and I never get tired of it.
Yeah, and it's actually a culminating event. And there's a lot of work that teachers and buildings do to, you know, share each other's cultures, to really delve deeply into what it means to be a global citizen. So, it's an outstanding project that culminates in a fun thing for the students and it's a pleasure to experience.
That would have been my item.
Oh, sorry.
No, but just to add that, you know, we were accompanied this time by the entire Vancouver Board and got a chance to interact with them and that was, that was good for us all. But yeah, Erin, how many, how many students were there? It was like over 2,000?
1,400, I think.
1,400 students shout huzzah in the, in the green space inside the fort is an experience that is not to be missed.
1,400 third graders in one space.
Yeah. The number of parents and educators who were along to make sure everybody got to where they were going and returned to the school safely was, it's always a sight to see. It's always just wonderful to see how the community supports kids.
All right, thank you. So, a couple things from me. Just a reminder that next Wednesday is our Region 6 WASDA meeting. It's at, Camus is hosting it. And then, of course, John already mentioned the gala. And thank you to everyone for donating items for our board basket to help raise some funds. And then, I also wanted to give a shout out to and acknowledge that it's Teacher Appreciation Week and Nurses Week. And the Community Relations Department's doing a fantastic job of showcasing all of our people in our schools. Sometimes, we'll read proclamations in the past, but I think it's so much more fun to see all the people in action captured on social media. So if you have a chance, please check that out. All right, anything else before we move on? All right, next is future agenda items. Do we have anything that we want to add? I do want to point out that in Board Workshop tonight, we're going to talk about Board Retreat topics. We already have a list started and we want to see about adding to, thanks for our summer planning meeting.
I do think we need to get on the books a workshop for the student rep planning with Principal Kuhnover. And the student reps are going to come up with a model for us to sort of see how we're going to move forward next year.
Yeah, correct. Do we have that scheduled for next workshop? Perfect.
So, in connection with the comment I made during the, during the strategic plan presentation, I would like us to spend some time in workshop identifying those pieces of our results and operational expectations policies, now that the strategic plan has been interpreted in terms of that, whether or not there are modifications to our policies that make sense and help us better align with the strategic plan that was developed. I imagine it as something that we could do in the fall or in the retreat as a start.
Okay. All right, anything else? All right, we'll move on to our Student Board Representative Report. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to the two of you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Tonight, we will be sharing some good news from across our district. Last week, the solo and ensemble state competition was held in Ellensburg, Washington at Central Washington University. There are multiple performances from bands, choirs and orchestras from all around our district. And notably, Union Choir and Mountain View Band made multiple placements at the competition. And another recent competition was the Skills USA State Competition in Tacoma, Washington, where Heritage High School earned the More Better Scholarship and Evergreen High School made multiple placements. Congratulations to all who competed and all who placed.
Hello, everybody. So, I have YIS Middle Schools, MESSA Team, who is like going to state and MESSA, which stands for Mathematics, Engineering Science Achievement. The competition will be held in Sierra. Good luck. And then, I have Mountain View Science Bowl Team, which finished in top 16 out of 68 high schools in the nation when it competed in the U.S. Department of Energy's National Science Bowl Finals last month in Washington, DC. They won $1,000 for the school program. And then, I have Tessa. She did.
We good? Thank you, thanks for sharing that with us. Good stuff happening out there, especially as we end up the, end of the school year. Oh, one more thing too, we have the art show that's happening right now, right? Or not quite yet. The 15th through the 27th, Cascade Park Library. All the art will be on view, so make sure you have a chance to see our students' art. Okay, at this time, it is time for public comments. Any community member wishing to address the board may do so during the designated time on the agenda for public comments, as long as the comments are not personnel-related or about an individual employee or student and are not legal in nature. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes to address the board. Comments are to be directed to the Board of Directors as a whole and may not be addressed to any individual board member, member of the board, the administrative staff, or the audience. Please state your name and district affiliation, if any. First on our list, we have Chuck Kepler. If you want to come on up, Chuck? Good evening.
Hello. My name's Chuck Kepler, longtime parent of Evergreen Public School kids, four who have, who have graduated, four currently in high school. Still here to talk to you guys about the current budget proposal. My understanding is when the board voted to move forward with this proposal, that everybody on the board, or at least a significant portion of the board, had said that there would still be communication and negotiation on this budget, that nothing was permanent, that there was still time and opportunity to adjust. But the things that I've witnessed happening in the schools says that you're either lying or ignorant of what is actually happening. These cuts are not being discussed, they're being implemented. People are being reassigned now. Athletic directors have been removed from their positions and principals are taking over AD responsibilities now. Family resource coordinators are being given, being given their new caseloads now. Adam Matheson was told that there was no job for him at the school that he has worked for, for 16 years. The new AD at Mountain View has sent out an email to every coach that is currently coaching at Mountain View, saying that if you would like to continue to coach, you need to reapply. But you've also failed to tell the public about the other cuts that are happening, that you're making, but haven't been talking about. Coaching stipends are being cut across all athletics. You've cut at least one stipend from every sport, is my understanding? And how is this keeping your word that if the levy passed, programs like athletics would continue without cuts? You expect these teams to operate with 40 or 50 players and one or two coaches. Why do you continue to lie and deceive? There are currently 200 empty elementary school classrooms in our district. That equals about a total of five full elementary schools that are sitting empty. And you can easily redistrict school boundaries, closing the oldest school in the district, and then repurposing another. The savings from that alone would be $5 million. That and taking district employment down to a level commensurate with our enrollment would take much of the pain out of these cuts. It would allow EPS to keep their ADs, their at-risk advocates, their family resource coordinators, their budget secretaries, their librarians, their academic interventionists, paraeducators and media assistants. To be honest, I was shocked to see your faces when you saw how many homeless students are in the schools, because the people who are in the schools know this. But the people that were just up here talking about the HART program, what they can't say or won't say is you're cutting their feet out from underneath them. One family resource coordinator in the district's new caseload has 180 homeless students. That means that they spent one day with only one homeless student to do all of the things that they would need, that that's all that they would be able to accomplish. Why is this not the direction that EPS is going? Why aren't we considering other ideas that would keep us under budget, but make the students the highest priority? And the real reason is, is because this is the model you want to go to. At least you could do is be honest with us. I come up here passionate and excited, but I'm saying facts. And I just want to leave with this quote from C.S. Lewis, "One of the most cowardly things ordinary people do is shut their eyes to facts."
All right, thank you Chuck. Next up is Lisa Swain.
Okay, it's Lisa Swan. It's okay. It's a tough act to follow, man. All right. One out of three Americans can read at a basic reading level. 54% of adults have a literacy below sixth grade level. You know, it can help with that? Keeping educated librarians in our district. That's a basic thing our district should have and we're looking to cut them. You know, you talked about several things that I just could automatically say how librarians could help you with reading scores, with testing in your schools. You know, we've got a Librarian of the Year that just went to Vancouver Public Schools for job security. That's sad to me. You know, the average person thinks, oh, a librarian just checks out a book. They have no clue, okay? Librarians, they're reading reviews which are super important with challenges and political things getting brought in to books these days. You know, with struggling readers, they've been educated. They know that large print can help with that. An average person probably doesn't know that. They can find exciting titles that a struggling reader or a kid that could care less about school, a homeless kid that's got a lot of going on at home, they could escape in a good book and a librarian could really engrain that in them and help them with that. You know, ask your teachers at every site how much they lean on librarians. When you adopt new curriculums, it's the librarians that are partnering with your teachers in every, in every site, helping them align books that will support their new projects or will help support the project that they're working on that'll make it a little more exciting. You know, your average and excel students that excel, maybe they don't need it so much, you know, but you shouldn't have to have a student that's struggling to care. You know, you should have empathy towards the kids that are homeless or that are struggling or that don't have two parents at home constantly, not that the parents don't want to, that they're trying to afford rent. You know, and librarians have such, sorry, I'm trying to look at your time, they have such a strong influence over kids. It certainly starts in elementary school. My daughter started kindergarten at the height of the pandemic. Boy, we put her librarian to work, God bless her. She would meet us on the curb to give my daughter books. She helped her set it up to where she could check out a book online. I mean, I just don't think we give librarians enough credit. Heck, I went to a pickleball tournament at Cascade Middle School. I love pickleball. She, I can only imagine how much money she raised. I had to pay 40 bucks to play. You know what she did? She didn't use that for personal use, she gave it to your students. I just saw a bunch of librarians come up, that, that local library didn't even do that bookmark anymore. Your librarians did it on their own time, just to make, give something else to your students, to love school. So, in your strategic plan, you even put in there that you want to listen and value input from the community. Don't just listen, put it to action, okay? Our students deserve the basics of having a librarian, not just a random person that comes in there, an educated librarian that can truly make a difference, help your scores, just overall, help them good humans. I just think you should really consider keeping them and not just getting a random person to go in there. That'd be like taking all your teachers and get a random person to just figure it out. It doesn't work like that. We need librarians.
Thank you, Lisa. All right, next up is Jenny Vertisca. Hey Jenny.
Hi. Hello again, School Board and Superintendent. My name is Jenny Vertisca and I have two students in the district. I spoke at the school board meeting on March 28th and expressed my concerns about the proposed budget and staffing cuts, along with the change in school start times. I didn't know if my words were going to make any difference, but I had to do it so I could tell my kids that I spoke up for them. I was encouraged when several school board members said they were voting yes on the proposed budget, but only with the understanding that changes are permitted until August, which would allow more board member discussion, workshopping and opening up a dialogue with the community. I then received an email on March 30th from the school board thanking me for sharing my thoughts, stating that you heard me and that you would like to continue our conversation. I was encouraged once again that the board seemed to be listening to the public. I was directed to a Google form to sign up to participate in the budget follow-up workshop. Upon reading the introduction on the form, I immediately lost hope. When I came across the line, this is not a session to modify which reductions are made, this is a session to share and receive feedback on our plans moving forward with the current recommendations. I submitted the form, but have not yet been invited to participate. I am very curious why you are asking for our feedback if you are not going to modify the reductions. This does not feel genuine. I have heard plenty of community feedback at the previous school board meetings to indicate that the public is not happy with the proposed reductions. You still have time to engage with the public and make changes that do not impact the students. I understand that budgets require cuts, but it should not be the students paying the price. It was also mentioned at the March 28th meeting that legislators like to hear stories from the students and we should encourage them to contact our state representatives. Why are we having our children beg for a quality education and for the jobs of their teachers, coaches, librarians and mentors? We are the adults. We have the responsibility to them. The children, we should be the ones brave enough to stand up for our children's education. These students are the future and deserve all of the support we can give them. It will benefit us all to give them a quality education and a positive public school experience. Please, truly listen to the public and modify your proposed reductions. Thank you.
Thank you Jenny. All right, next up on the list is Gary Wilson. Good evening Gary.
Evening. At the last board meeting, Chuck Kepler spoke during public comments that he had information he had obtained from a public records request, showing currently, the district office staffing is at 215 employees. And in 2016, at the highest student enrollment, over 27,000 students, ESD had 221 district office staff. Looking back to when the enrollment was below 23,000, as it is now, district office staffing was at 179. It was also mentioned that the proposed budget showed district staff to be cut by an 11 and a half, so that would be going from 215 to 203 and a half. The point he was making was, when in the past, when the enrollment was at our current level, we had 179 district office staff. And even with a $19 million budget cut, it appears we'll be at 203 and a half district office staff, almost 25 more staff than when we were last at the student enrollment level. I'm not here to say this is right or wrong. Without more detail and actual 2023-24 detailed proposed budget to review, it's hard to make any knowledgeable suggestions. I believe transparency with this proposed budget would help the damage control you're currently in. Rather than just say, here are the cuts we're making, let's see the actual nuts and bolts, line, item by line item, so we can all understand better where these cuts should be coming from. I'm looking forward to meeting with Superintendent Boyd later this week and wanted to review the proposed budget with him, but I'm finding that that is not available. It's just a proposed budget which can be revised before your final vote in August. So, let's be transparent with your district and let's see the budget, that we can all come to a better understanding of where these cuts are most needed, line by line. Also, I'm curious how the SIP program's effect has had since its implementation last October. Not just flowery words, but is it actually going to raise the current 25% of ESD students meeting OSPI math standards? I want to add that only 38% of ESD students are meeting English standards and only 35- 35% are meeting science standards per OSPI. That's a 33.1% average in students meeting the three academics, only one in three. ESD is the lowest-performing school district in the nine Clark County school districts, while next-door CAMUS is averaging 70% of their students meeting OSPI standards in the three academics. 33% compared to 70%. I've mentioned several times in the past to this board for well over a year now, why not do an analysis of the teachers and what percent of their students are meeting standards to identify those being successful, to glean from them, and put their best practices into place, and also identify those not successful, to get them more training. At the last board meeting, oh, excuse me. Lastly, I just want to thank Kimberly Warren, who spoke at last month's board meeting about her concerns with the comprehensive sex ed flash curriculum. She was correct, and I've also asked this board about, check the facts, a more family-friendly sex ed curriculum. And it's, yeah, just check the facts. Check it out. If you want to know why you're losing students, as I've said before, flash curriculum is one of the reasons. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. All right, at the time, 7:22, the board will now go into recess, where we will sign documents, a workshop to review an astronomy resource for adoption, an instructional materials committee applications, discuss Board Retreat Agenda Items, a legislative update, followed by an executive session to discuss potential litigation, expected to last approximately 45 minutes. Thank you very much.